The time is now seven o'clock and let's get today's meeting of District 208 started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Darty.
Mr. Durkin.
Here.
Ms. Siasa.
Here.
And Truska.
Here.
Mr. Knopf.
Here.
Mr. Van Foren.
Yes.
Do we have any visitor statements tonight? Doesn't appear, we don't appear to have any visitor statements. Think we can now move on to FOIA requests?
FOIA requests, we had three, I believe three, let me just make sure, three FOIA requests. The responses are included in your packet. We had a request about employees who are certified school librarians, specific information regarding our record keeping system, and Ethan Sol, a capstone project he was completing, wanted to gather some information on enrollment from the district. And so those are all included in your board packet.
Thank you. Questions on FOIA requests? If there are no questions, we can then move on to the high school leadership team performance reports.
Dr. Freitas, would you like to do the introduction, please?
Good evening, honorable board members. Today, our building team will be presenting on our school district performance data for the past school year. I would like to invite Ms. Kylie Linquist, Ms. Beth Bogustine, and Mr. Kevin Baltis to present on freshman on track, college and career readiness attainment, and our graduation report.
Who's going first? Are we coming up together?
Yeah, they're coming up together.
Do you want us to do it in order of the report, or do you want to, does it matter to the board?
Is the copy of the report in the packet, Mary Ann?
No.
Okay. Do we have copies for the board?
No, I thought it was in the packet.
Okay.
I can get them.
Mr. Mann, may I make quick copies, please, for the board?
Thank you.
Dr. Freitas, why don't you cover your principal's report before we get started?
Will do. Again, greetings, honorable board members of District 208, and Dr. Skinkas, our superintendent. Tonight, I'm sharing some terrific news. RB recently earned the gold recognition on the 2023 AP School Honor Roll, and we're just eight percent away in one metric from earning platinum status. To qualify for the 2023 AP School Honor Roll, schools must have met or exceeded the criteria for a given recognition level for all three metrics. For the first metric, college culture, which could be seen if we go to page two, page three of my report. For the first metric, college culture, which looks at the percentage of students in the graduating class who took an AP exam at any point in high school regardless of score, we had seventy-two percent, or three hundred and six out of four hundred and twenty-three graduates, who didn't meet that mark. For the second metric, college credit, which looks at the percentage of students in the graduating class who scored three or higher on any AP exam in high school, RB had fifty-three percent, or two hundred and twenty-three out of four hundred and twenty-three, meet that mark. For the last metric, college optimization, which looks at the percentage of students in the graduating class who took five or more AP exams in high school, where at least one exam was taken in ninth or the tenth grade, RB had twenty-nine percent, or one hundred and twenty-two out of four hundred and twenty-three Bulldogs, meet the mark. Overall, RB earned platinum in two out of the three metrics, thus earning gold recognition for now. Lastly, RB also earned the AP Access Award, which is given to schools when the percentage of underrepresented and/low-income students accessing the school's AP program is the same as or greater than the percentage of the school's graduating class. So overall, folks, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our AP teachers, all of our general education teachers, all of the building administrators, for this prestigious honor. Now, we're doing well when it comes to AP attainment and success. We're excited for many good things to come with our AP program. On the teaching and learning, October 20th, it is institute day, so it is a non-attendance day. And I'm really excited because in partnering with our teachers, they told us, we want to learn from each other, we want to work with each other. I mean, we have some fantastic sessions coming up on artificial intelligence for teaching, looking at the STAR data, deep dive, do credit opportunity for students. So our teachers are supporting one another in some of these topics. So again, I'm really excited for our institute day on October 20th. A day prior to that, on October 19th, we have our parent teacher conferences. The league actually opened today, so all parents could sign up, and they could fill up, so sign up today. On the activities and athletics, on October 10th, tonight, just a few minutes ago, we celebrated our girls' senior night for swimming, so congratulations to Coach Lawrence and all of the seniors. It looked like we were ahead of more, so I got to see some really cool meets recently. And then this Friday, October 13th, we have senior night for our boys soccer program versus Kennedy. The JV team plays at 5:30, and the varsity plays at 7:15. And to the board and Dr. Skinkas, that concludes my principal's report of this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. That AP award is a really big deal, so kudos to everybody at the building level and all of our teachers and divisionals. I know Kylie Fletcher put that out last Friday, so that's great acknowledgement of our AP program and our open and access too.
Is any of that information on our website?
It's on our website, it went out in the positive pride newsletter. Yes, it's on all three of our social media pages, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter.
I send it every way possible.
Yeah. Okay, so Mary Ann, you have the copy now of the school performance report. Let's, Dave, if we could help her make that a little bigger, so. And Mr. Mann, I want to make hard copy, so we can scroll down if we want to. Who wants to go first, Ms. Linquist?
Sure, let's dive in. Performance Indicator 4 is the indicator that's under mine, Mary Ann, so if you could scroll until you see Performance Indicator 4, it will be about the sixth page. There we go. Okay, so Performance Indicator 4 is the college and career readiness as measured by the PSAT and SAT suite. This is the fourth year of us collecting our data in this format, so that's why you're going to see, starting with the class of 2020 to class of 2023. What we typically do on these reports, or before we change the metric, is look at a five-year snapshot, so once I hit five years, then we'll start to let some of those fall off. I think it's important always to note that all of this data includes only students who began with us with a PSAT VIII entrance exam and stayed with us through their junior year of testing. So if a student transferred in, as we have often to see students do, for example, at the beginning of their junior year, their data is not included in this sample because we are looking at students that we have moved through our matriculation process. So there are several figures in my report. Figure one, the students who meet benchmark in ERW or in math. I always note underneath the colored band in each of the chart the number of test takers that we're talking about, so the number of students that have that test on file from their entrance into RB through their junior year. So you can look always at the band that's highlighted in color in comparison to the years preceding it to the right. So for the...
Kylie, just a quick clarification.
Mm-hmm.
The percentage here is the percentage, if I read it correctly, that met the benchmark, and in parentheses, that's the number of students who tested, right?
Yes. Well, that's the number, in parentheses is the number of students that that percentage represents.
That's the seventy-six percent.
Do we know what portion of the whole that is? So like...
So in this case, class of 2023, there were three hundred and twenty total test takers. You'll see that at the bottom of the green.
So that's the bottom, okay, so that way we know what the whole was, okay.
Yes. So seventy-six percent represents two hundred and forty-two of those three hundred and twenty students. When it gets complicated, it's kind of the next, the next chart is where it gets a little bit convoluted because in figure one, we present the students who just straight up met benchmark when they tested as juniors. Then in figure two, what we're looking at is students who maybe did not hit that benchmark but who made what is considered typical growth as far as the college board is concerned. So typical growth, for example, in ERW, from the time a student were to enter RB until they tested their junior year, is ninety points of growth. So what we've done is we've looked at, in the ERW case, the seventy-seven students who did not just outright meet benchmark as juniors, and we looked at how many of those seventy-seven students made expected growth or exactly what the college board would hope that they would grow during their time at RB. So that is where the twenty-two number comes in. Twenty-two students out of the seventy-seven who did not meet made expected growth. In math...
So they made, they scored, they grew, they grew at least ninety points, but they still didn't hit the 480 benchmark?
Yes. So they grew as college board would expect them to, but their deficit was such that that, even that growth did not get them up to benchmark. Now, when you look at math, the math growth as the math benchmark is more significant or more stringent, I guess I'll say, than the ERW benchmark. Whereas the ERW benchmark is 480, the math benchmark is 530. So when you're looking at that figure two, and you're looking at math expected growth, the number is a little higher of students who did not outright meet benchmark. One hundred and twenty-nine students in the junior class that we are reporting on did not outright meet benchmark. Of those one hundred and twenty-nine, though, forty-six of them made at least a hundred points of growth or more. So the expected growth or greater. And then where you can really see where that kind of adds all up, and you look at the class as a whole, is in figure three, and this is the blue column in the chart. So in ERW, for the class, the junior class that we're reporting, eighty-three percent of them, by their junior year, either got to benchmark or they grew as much as college board would expect them to grow. Eighty-three percent, or two hundred and sixty-four of those three hundred and twenty students.
Well, my understanding is, in parentheses, it says two hundred and sixty-four, so only two hundred and sixty-four took, protested?
No.
Of the three hundred and twenty...
The test takers is listed in the title.
In that grouping.
Correct. So there were three hundred and twenty test takers, that's listed at the top of the column. And then underneath that, you see that that is eighty-three percent, but I put in parentheses how many students compromise that eighty-three percent.
So what was the total number?
Three hundred and twenty test takers.
So everybody in the class took it?
Three hundred and twenty, yep.
So, okay.
Yeah. So then for math, when we add all of that kind of cumulative together, seventy-four percent of this junior class either met the math benchmark outright or they grew one hundred or more points. So three-fourths of the class there. That's two hundred and thirty-six students out of the three hundred and twenty test takers. So then what we see in figure four are those students who were not at benchmark and did not get within what the appropriate growth for that benchmark should be. So in ERW, there were fifty-five students who neither met benchmark nor the expected growth. In math, that number was eighty-three, so you can see that the percentages there are reflective of the number of students who still did not get to that point.
How many of them overlapped, met, did not meet growth in either ERW or math?
I can't tell you that off the top of my head.
Just curious.
I could have figured that, but I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can tell you that that number is likely high, is likely high. At this point, we're talking about students maybe who have come in at such a deficit that you're, you know, you're having some difficulty getting them to where they need to be. One of the interesting things about STAR that we see when we pull the data from STAR on something like an instructional planning report, so I'm a teacher and I get that instructional planning report, and STAR reports everything, one of the reasons I like it better than NWA MAP, I'm not being paid to say that, is because STAR reports everything in grade level, and grade level is very understandable. That's something that is very easy to understand. When we look at some of those instructional planning reports for our Algebra II trade kiddos, because that's a hot-button class, right, that's a class that's like organic chemistry for a med school student, right? When we look at some of that, we're seeing students whose skills are in the second, the third, the fourth grade level. And so you're talking about, in some cases, what seem like insurmountable deficits. And there are lots of things that we can do to address those types of things, but you often see housed in these numbers, some students with some really significant need that are, that's going to continue to rear its ugly head.
Sorry for asking this question, but, so the thing that comes to mind is now that algebra trick class is junior year.
Mm-hmm.
How many of those eighty-three students in math could have been caught during freshman on track? Because that's a big number, and we're always reporting really high freshman on track rates, so it's just not balancing out for me right now. And again, I apologize, we just, I just...
Yeah, I would love to answer that.
But these are all questions that we need to consider because we're about to hear freshman on track data, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be great, I already know it, because it always is. But then when you start looking at these eighty-three kids, where were they during freshman on track? Were they on track? Because that's a third-year class, right?
On track means on track to graduate.
Correct.
I'm talking about on track to be successful in life.
Right, but they are two different things.
The metric isn't going to make sense to try to match these numbers to what you're, what you're hoping to, which is where we want to be, but that, that's not going to have the correlation that we want ever because it's a different metric that we're looking at.
I know, but freshman on track always gives us a very, a false sense, a false sense of where we really, of where the kids really are academically.
I would say, I know that since I don't know the exact, like, answer to this question, my inner Dr. Smetana is telling me to shut up and I just can't help myself, so I'm not going to try it anyway. I would say our freshman math students are probably, and you slap me if you think I'm wrong, are probably the most heavily support, some of the most heavily supported students in our building. Our extended math gives them the algebra curriculum at seventy-five minutes versus fifty. And then we have a pre-algebra class that is, I want to say fifteen kids with a math teacher and a paraprofessional who fortunately this year has a math certification as a certified math teacher. So what ends up happening, this is just, this is me, this is me spitballing. We have incredible supports, algebra academic support, where Patty and Tia are going in every day. And I have sat in on those classes because I do those observations. Our students are very successful in freshman algebra because we have the resources put in place and kind of the structure put in place to very heavily support them. We see this in English and in math, and it's something that we're addressing as a building, where that support definitely wanes from freshman year. And that's one of the reasons why we have worked with the district to allocate some FTE at that sophomore and junior level, because we do a lot of support at that freshman math level, and then they go on to sophomore, which we know is a breakdown year as educators in general. And we're like, okay, cool, you guys got it, have a good time in your math class, right? And so I think that we are working now to do a better job at supporting students at the sophomore and the junior level. And I also think that it bears kind of at least mentioning that math progression and growth is so much a different beast than in other subjects because of the way that it builds on itself. So when you see students that are at a junior level and they're still testing so much lower, I think the training wheels being pulled off as that content continues to build, continues to build is a problem that we're solving for.
But we just implemented that this year.
Yes.
Right, that's what the intervention teacher...
Yes. And so I think we've put the things in place, the systems, the STAR support, and being able to understand what STAR tells us and looking at focus skills and all these things that we've put in place. But I do think because of, and I think, I'm proud of the way that we support our incoming freshmen, I do think that in some instances, you are going to have a skewed perspective because there's so much happening between that freshman year and when they take that test junior year. So I definitely see what you're saying.
Just curious, because the numbers, so again, I...
I just don't know, I just don't know from my experience that it's predictive the way that we want it to be.
Well, that's the, the one, the matrix you're reporting out there is what's on the school report card?
Yeah.
On the freshman on track. So I think, based on the question, I think we heard this question last year, Dr. Freitas, was we should be tracking how our students are doing as freshmen. And so if they're in some of those intervention classes, they're already identified as, they need additional assistance because they're not on pace with the PSAT VIII benchmark or where they came in at their scores, so they needed additional assistance, not, no big deal, they need additional help or more time. But we should see how many, you know, we grew, which it sounds like, you kind of have that there with the twenty-two and the forty-six. They grew enough from their eighth grade score to their junior score, right?
Yes.
Which is figure two. Okay.
So I'm still coming back to this because the numbers don't seem to match for me. So when I look at your indicator, you know, four, that class of 2023, we're showing three hundred and twenty, twenty students, is that our total junior class?
That is the number of students who, of the junior class, who were with us for an entrance score at PSAT VIII through junior year. So it is very possible that's not the entire class.
Okay, so there, I, I'm assuming there's probably almost a hundred students.
Little less, maybe eighty.
Seventy to eighty.
Seventy to eighty students that we don't have information on.
Well, we have their PSAT score, but what we're trying to track for the board is how they're doing on the SAT from eighth grade when we give them the entrance level test to their junior year.
Right, still...
We could come here as a junior and take the PSA, or the SAT as a junior. We don't have any preliminary data to see how they did as a sophomore or freshman, eighth grade.
Still, it's misleading to say seventy-six percent of the junior class is really not...
No, it's not the junior class, it's of the test takers.
Of the test takers, but we're only looking at, if almost a hundred is missing, we're only looking at seventy-five percent of the population, and now we're saying seventy-six percent of seventy-five percent of the population, so...
I understand what you're saying, so figure one should be percentages of students who were with us freshman through junior year.
Right, so I think, you know...
Clarification in the title.
Right, so that's, that says kind of something, we're just looking at the population. Because we're about sixteen hundred, if there's four hundred students and we're only, I'm rounding, looking at three hundred, that's a hundred students left, so we're only looking at three-fourths of this population junior year.
For this report, yes.
Right, for this report.
For this report.
And then we're saying that three-fourths of the three-fourths, so is that nine-sixteenths of the whole population? Or that's...
No, because that makes the assumption that the others are not correlating. We have, we don't, we're only looking at what is in our purview to measure for our purposes of...
How are we doing? Evaluating our programs.
Correct, but we've got to be...
Let me cut it.
Right.
You're asking for data that is not going to provide us insights as to our cause and effect.
I'm not asking for that data, right? You're not understanding me.
I, I could be wrong. From what I'm hearing, you're asking for something that is not being provided because what's being provided is the intent to show what we have an effect on. So I'm hearing you, we aren't going to have that data right now. What are we going to get from hearing more without the provision of saying three-quarters of three-quarters? That's not what it is. We don't know, we could have all eighty of those students passing and we wouldn't know. Or they could be doing worse, but all of it is speculation as opposed to looking at the apples-to-apples data that we have right here.
And I'm not saying I need to know what they're doing, but I'm saying this is misleading when I see seventy-six percent. I understand you're saying of who took the test, but that is not a clear picture of our entire junior class. And that's, I want to be very clear, that we're looking at three-fourths of our junior class.
Yeah.
That was with us.
Yeah.
So out of the three-fourths that we're looking at, it's not seventy-six of the whole, and the chart is not clear on that. So there's a lot of unknown, we don't know, twenty-five percent is a lot of unknown.
I think that, I tried to, and I can certainly adjust the chart, but I tried to indicate that at the top by explaining that, because that is the measurement that the board set. That's, like, I didn't decide.
We wanted to see how we're doing once we get up to the junior year.
Right, I understand that, but there's twenty-five percent of our population junior year, we don't know.
Well, we have their scores, but that doesn't line up with the matrix that the board set up.
Right, they're not in it.
The board wanted to know how are we doing when they came in as freshmen?
Right.
So why would we put somebody in that came in as a sophomore or junior?
I'm not saying to put them in, but this is not giving me a full snapshot of our whole junior year. It's giving me a limited vision of our junior year.
Okay. Because in the sentence in red, it says it's the students meeting or exceeding or making growth from eighth grade entrance exam to SAT junior year.
So three-fourths of the class, our junior class, we have good data on, and we can understand what three-fourths of the...
I think it means three-fourths of our junior class have been with us since the beginning.
Right.
And one-fourth of the junior class have not been with us since the beginning.
That's the, that's, there's the, that's the key.
So there's a hundred students that we just don't know about.
So what would you like to know about the four-fourths?
No, we know a lot, it's not included in this data.
Right, because that's not what we have.
Because it's not relevant to this data, and you're continuing to ask to inject it into data that is what we can control. So I'm sorry that I'm raising my voice, but I'm not sure what you're asking for. Are you asking that we now look apples to oranges?
No.
Then why are we continuing to have this discussion? This data is the data that we have control of as a school from students who took the eighth grade PSAT to the junior year SAT, apples-to-apples because they were with us and we had the ability to track our progress as an RB district.
So if I want to see what our whole junior year is doing...
Then this isn't the data.
This isn't the data, that's right. And so that doesn't, that doesn't give me a good indication how strong... It gives me great data, and out of the students that were with us, so for three-fourths of our population have been with us for all these years, that's great. But there's still a fourth of our population...
What is it going to tell us about our impact?
That score will be put on the score report card, so I can get that to you, no problem.
Right. So, you know, if you're looking to go into a, a program and you want to know how well the program is doing, you don't say, I'm going to cut off a fourth of the program and only look at a small subset of it. If you want to kind of get a general look of the whole junior class or school...
Laura, for purposes of this report, that's the information we asked for, therefore that's the information we got.
But I think we should be clear that this is a subset.
It is clear. It says class, number of test takers in class of 2023 equals three-twenty plus the red sentence up above, the indicator definition.
It doesn't say what the whole junior class is, so nobody knows how many we don't know that are not included in here. And I think that's...
Okay.
It doesn't give an accurate picture.
I think we can...
It does give the accurate picture that we asked for. If you were given a stu, if you were a teacher and you were given a student halfway through the school year and then asked to take a test in, let's say, February, would you consider the student that came in January 8th to be the same measurement as the students you had from August 15th to the end of February? Should they all be tested the same?
If I had a class of twenty kids and I said fifteen of them were with me all year, and out of the fifteen, seventy-five percent did well, they would say, but how did the whole class do? And I would have to say, I can't answer how the whole class did, but I can tell you about three-fourths of the class.
So for the full class data, we look at the school report card?
Correct.
And for, so that's what we should be looking at, Laura, we'll, we'll move on to that.
I will send that out on the Friday after when it's released, October 30th.
Is there, who's next?
Kylie, are you done with your report?
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you.
Okay, so are we going back to one, or Beth, are you taking on?
I can move on to freshman on track.
Okay.
Number three, performance indicator number three. Good. So freshman on track, we came in at ninety-six point oh-eight. The state figures this out for us, so it's automatically figured out. We had, as of August 2023, we had four hundred and fourteen students, and seventeen of those students were considered not on track. Just as clarification, not on track is figured out by a half-credit, more than a half-credit in a core class failure, so English, math, science, social studies, and world language, if a freshman had... If a freshman has a failure of more than a half a credit in one of those areas, they are considered to be off track. So I am able to print a report from our student information system from the state, who those students are, and then able to look at more specifically who they are and give you a little bit more information. We have five of those students had IAPs, one is an ELL student. Six of those students were transfer students, meaning they were not from one of our three feeder schools. A breakdown of male, female students, breakdown of student race. Two of the five students with IAPs were outplace students and since then, two of those students have transferred out of RV. Pause for a second if you have questions. So we've stayed pretty consistent, I mean, from last year. This year's, the class of 2023 is actually a little bit larger, so it's nice to see that we stayed very close to where we were last year. We will obviously continue to monitor those students and where they are progressing this year and then monitoring the class of 2027. The quarter ends Friday? Next Friday. Time has gone by very quickly. And monitoring failures for first quarter and seeing interventions that need to be put in place for those students in obviously core areas, but all areas if students are failing, obviously not just for freshmen. Utilizing some of our current interventions, whether it's, it's homework hangout, utilizing our teachers, their before and after-school hours, contacting parents. The Student Services Department has a parent meeting tomorrow night and we will make sure that for our freshman parents, and we actually invited transfer student parents this year to attend the meeting. But for our freshman parents, we'll definitely highlight some of these interventions. If their students are, are struggling and needing some additional support, we will highlight some of the additional supports and resources. Kevin, you want to add anything?
No, that was real good.
Any comments, freshman on track?
Graduation rate?
Graduation rate, moving.
Number five.
Moving on to performance indicator, number five. So graduation rate is 93.69%. I had predicted 93% this time last year, so my prediction was very close. That is the graduation rate when we are not factoring in the special education students that are returning for transition services. So when you put our students, add back in the students that are actually here for transition services, our graduation rate is really 96.8 and that's highlighted in yellow. So that's really what our graduation rate would be if we were including our special education population. I'll let Kevin share.
Twenty of those 26 students are receiving special education services. Eleven do stay on for going in our transition program for our young adults up to the age of 23 and a half years of age or the, the school year in which they, they turn that age. We did have three of those students, it's interesting, the state will, if we have students that come to us right out of eighth grade that go into ESY, typically those are kids that are on life skills program, all-ten years program, that require extended school year services and so they don't have any regression of skills from leaving eighth grade. The state counts them on that previous year's graduation number. So you see that three, that, those are kids, they're kids that are technically going to be ending their senior year, that next school year, but they get included because they are enrolled here before the July 1st. So the state kind of takes that data a little bit differently than like a typical incoming freshman class.
And 10 of those 26 students were considered as dropped students and I just gave you a breakdown, a little more data on who those students were. And then over the past 14 years, the range has been between three and 13 students have been considered dropped. So it feels like good that we're kind of staying in that range, you know, we never want to lose any students leaving for various reasons. Any questions on that?
So the state counts, so the, the state report card will show 93.69?
It will, and then we will have the adjusted graduation rate. So if you look under 2022. Under 2022, our adjusted graduation rate is now 96.63. So as we have students complete their graduation requirements, if a student came back for, say a non-special education student came back for a fifth year to finish credits, we would count them in our graduation rate. But we have students that will take their diploma, if they decide, students in the special education department decide to take their diploma, then they will include them in our graduation rate. So that's another reason why that percentage will continue to go up and be adjusted. And then just including some of our continued action steps to keep our graduation rate at a, a high number. Our various interventions that Student Services will work with the Special Education Department and with Dave and the deans with attendance. It's a, it's a team effort. And with Kylie and the division heads to keep the, the rate as high as possible.
So, Dr. Freitas, something you should be tracking as a principal, I'm sure you do, is it'd be interesting to see maybe in the future with this report, right? We have the graduation rate that's highlighted in yellow for the board.
Yes.
Which is the adjusted, right? So those are kids that came in as freshmen and graduated on time. It'd be interesting to see, we should start having core data that we can correlate, what was their freshman on track? Right, so if we see that, when we reported to the board four years ago, they were at 96 or 97%. When they graduated, that either went up or went down. That's the whole point of the matrix on the school report card and what the board wanted to see is when we get them as freshmen and they're on track as freshmen, that they graduated, like did that number go up, down, did it stay the same? Did we, you know what I mean? So that would be a good number for us to start reporting out when we give this report annually to the board, is what was that class's freshman on track rate? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Does that make sense to the board? Would that be a good indicator to have maybe somewhere on this report like? So we can see if our interventions and things we're doing throughout the four years are having a positive effect.
And, and the one thing that that does demonstrate is graduation rate. It doesn't speak to GPA, it doesn't speak to those other standards in that. So understanding what each of the metrics is really telling us is where we need to frame how we look at the numbers. I mean, if we, if we want freshman on track to mean, you know, success in life, that it becomes a different metric as to what we're trying to understand right now with performance. On track is strictly talking about credits earned to move through the system with the stamp we.
Yes, but we would be naive to think that on track means that they are going to be college and career ready because let's just be clear, on track, you could have all Ds and still be on track.
But that's what on track.
And that's what gets schools in trouble, is the whole, oh, we're on track, we're on track, we're on track, we're doing great, 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 great. When our students really are screaming for help and they're not doing, they're struggling academically, right? It's just the way the consortium framed it and the way the schools use it are two different things. And let's just, and it's okay, that's what happens, right? But we just have to be realistic in knowing that a high freshman on track is, is good for graduation rate, but it's not good for college and career readiness. It's not going to do anything for our PSAT, for our SAT scores. It's not going to do anything for, I mean, we just talked about the SAT distinction that, that we got or the AP distinction that we got. And here we are having conversations about 90, 84 students who didn't meet the math benchmark. That's a problem because what happened to those 84 students, right? And then we're talking about 10 of them who didn't graduate. What's the demographic background breakdown on these 10 students? Because it's not on here. So we do demographic breakdown for everyone else, but we're not doing it for the 10 that did not graduate. Just curious, just to keep it consistent.
Yeah, we just got five males and five females.
Something else to consider, so just giving you some things to.
Yeah, I can certainly, yeah, I can certainly add that.
Similar to what you had for freshman on track. Right, that's what you're looking for?
That, that's all, yep.
Absolutely.
Just for the sake of consistency.
Yeah, I can certainly add that.
So the freshman on track, that, that metric has always been on track to graduate.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Right. So and you can graduate with a C, you can graduate with a D, it just means you're on track to graduate.
Correct.
Here.
It's not on track for the benchmark.
Right.
Any other indicators?
Yes, we have.
We have two more.
Right, have any of you anything else but special ed or is that everything?
That's everything.
Do you want me to send, do you want to know who those?
Yeah, we could put it on Friday up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And then go ahead to our engagement and attendance. Dave, Dan, you want to come up? For the board, I think you met Dan Jones before, but I don't know if you, this is Dan Jones, one of our interim ADs.
Hello, everybody.
From Hensdale Central, he just retired from Hensdale Central and helping us out this year as one of our interns. So he's going to report on last year's data with Dave. He also has a couple other updates, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Dave, you want to go first to the daily attendance?
Yep, good evening. Uh, tonight I'm going to provide a summary of the 22, 23 school years that relates to performance indicators and average daily attendance and engagement. Be one and two. Looking at our data from last year, our overall average daily attendance came in around 93.8%, which is up slightly from the previous school year. The goal that we set here is 95%. So, you know, we're working hard to close that gap and we're getting closer to that area. I'm going to get into greater detail with the, with some of the data here in a second. Looking at increases that impacted our overall ADA, we had a 5% increase in number of illnesses reported. Fall was a particularly bad month for illnesses along with COVID. We saw probably 125 COVID cases that last fall, which contributed to around 650 or so days missed of absences. And then in the month of November alone, we had about a night, almost 2,000 days of illnesses in November compared to the 21, 22 school years. Quite a bit of sickness in the building last fall. Looking at some data further, just Mondays and Tuesdays historically from last year were days that were missed or excused call-ins that we saw from the office. And Wednesdays were the most attended. We went over COVID a little bit. We also saw an 8% increase in number of vacations reported and those typically, and looking at last year's data and the year before, fell in between breaks. So before, after, you know, large breaks, winter break, Thanksgiving, spring break. So we saw an increase there as well. Positive or other data points, I think, that helped us out a little bit. All students per the state can take mental health days up to five. And we saw actually a decrease in that last year. It went from 858 in 2022 to 680 days reported in 2023, so that's great.
Is that five a semester or five a year?
Five a year.
Five a year.
Uh, to increase our ADA percentage, our team is meeting weekly with our small teams and that's us, our, our deans, as well as the Student Services Office with Beth's office. And we discuss anything from interventions to chronic truancy to behavior and game plan interventions and things that we can put in place to help those students either get to class or help curb some of the behaviors that are going on. We are utilizing our Tapestry Program, Tapestry Programs, it has two advocates from our West 40 regional office that serves as in-person support here and they each have up to, well, the program has up to 60 students who are identified through the small teams as having chronic truancy issues. And that support is kind of like on the ground level, not only will they connect on a day-in, a day-out basis, but also put kind of some goals in place for those students to connect on the, the school front, but then also kind of like a wrap service with their family as well. So it's been a really successful program that we've seen and a really nice place for our students to go to when they're stressed out, when they have certain needs, and then also another outlet for us to utilize, you know, when we have students that are out for extended periods of time, we can lean on our Tapestry Program to really connect up with those families and those students. We've really done a, a big push in, in utilizing our Skyward application. What we've learned through Skyward is that if you're doing absences or reporting absences on the app, it's a little more cumbersome for families. So we're going to be in some heavy training here in the next couple of weeks, our front office staff, seeing how we can best utilize Skyward. Sometimes they, they are not the most user-friendly with their web interface. So using your desktop or laptop or something like that is way easier to report your absences. So just some helpful information there. So we're going to see what we could do about that in regards to using the app. One thing we're also going to push out here as we get closer to second quarter is having our students get on the app just to see, not necessarily report, that's, that's more from our guardians and our parents, but seeing where their absences are, and then also pushing out monthly reports that give a graph indicator of where their absences, where they're unverified, so then where they need to come clear up some of their, their records with us in our attendance office. We're also going to hold a family night so we can have our parents come in and then we can kind of show them the ins and outs of our Skyward program. I don't think we do that enough. And then we talked about actually implementing this in our future Bulldog Night with our incoming families as well, giving them a tutorial and overview of our, our system. Any questions on attendance? Uh, moving on to the engagement report, we're excited to report out that our average student engagement in activities and athletics hit our goal, which is 70%. We saw an increase across the board as it relates to students participating in one, two, or three activities and/or sports. The most significant jump, jump came from the freshman and sophomore classes as participation in one sport or activity went from 125 to 162 and then from 118 to 142 in a sophomore class. So we really saw a, a significant leap forward and that's contributed to just the variety of offerings that we have here on campus. I think students are getting creative with bringing some unique concepts and, and options and then our staff's doing a great job of volunteering and getting on board and helping see that program go forward. Looking at another area, we saw a significant increase also in our freshman classes. They went from, and this is something we don't see very often, but they went from 60 students to 85 students participating in three or more activities or sports. So we always put that clarifier on, you know, even when I was in high school, they, they said, hey, three-sport athlete, there's a very significant award here as well with activities. I mean, 85 students from the freshman class, which has around 400 and some, that's a, a significant amount. So we're really excited about their, and their involvement and their engagement on campus. Looking at the three-year historical percentage of students in extracurriculars per grade level, we had 92 more students participating in activities or sports last school year and that really contributed to our 70% engagement rate. Some programs that started up last year, Cyber Security Club, that's a club where students can go through an online program with Ms. Maritzin, Mr. Bronarigo. They meet almost on a weekly basis and it's a program that offers certification and also some opportunities for scholarships. And I think that's a field that's growing. We talked about computer science a couple of years ago and I think the cybersecurity field and coding and programming in that area is just taking off. So it's a great offering for our students. Bowling is another area that was an extracurricular last year that saw monthly outings with a significant attendance of around 50 or so students each time. We also did some leadership programs and activities through the bowling team. And so that's something that we're encouraging to see and thank Mr. McGovern for his help in there. And then, you know, each year it seems like our musical and our fall plays and those productions, double cast and those casts keep growing. So Ms. Johnson, Ms. Snakey, Mr., I'm blanking on his name right now. Why Char? With his involvement, Mr. Baum with his technical skills. They've been really helpful in, in growing that program out. And this year, what we're really looking to do is enhance our social media with the help of Kylie Fletcher and update our website. help of Kylie Fletcher and update our website, really promote our activity fairs. We just had one in September. Our students are receiving, are going to be receiving a survey from our Student Equity Leadership Group. I know that was a question that was presented last year about, hey, where are those students that are not participating? And we thought, instead of just bringing that information to this meeting, let's wait. And through our D E I work, we've, our strand, our student voice and equity strand has developed a Student Equity Leadership Team, and those students, who are comprised of student volunteers through our grade level assemblies for students across each grade level, are coming up with that survey. And that survey is going to also include the question that you were looking for last year in regards to, if you're not involved in something, how can we help you? How can we increase those opportunities for you, present those in different ways for you to get involved? And so we're excited to see that, and that hopefully, without a timeline that we established, will be done by the end of first semester. Two new programs that we have also, as I finish up here, Mariachi Band and our Bacon Club is taking off, and that'll be a monthly event that students can get involved in. We just hung up flyers today, just kind of like starting around different holidays or different fun activities. I think they're doing one for Halloween here coming up, so.
Before we get into Mr. Jones, because he would be able to report too much.
Sure.
I wanted to, I want you to look at, so each year, if you look at the historical, just like we talked with Dr. Freitas, that he's going to report out as the principal on like the on-track for benchmark, the on-track compared to graduation rate. I think the third one, Hector, that we need to see is like, okay, so Dave gave this report this year of those, how many that you're reporting out from, it's always a year behind, right? Because we don't get all this data until after school year. But it'd be interesting to see is how many of those kids are freshmen of that 30% not engaged or not involved in something? Because we have, a lot of our students are in multiple, and we're only counting kids once. So even though we're starting these new clubs, adding these new sports, adding more levels, a lot of those kids are in multiple, they're in more than one, so they can only count them once. It'd be interesting to see of those 30%, how many are freshmen, sophomores, and juniors? And next year, when you come back, how many of those kids we got off of that list and got them engaged? Does that make sense, Dr. Freitas?
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. I think that'd be another good report to be able to share with the board. So like, just a bullet point on the bottom of the 30% last year that were not engaged, 16, 16% of them ended up enjoying something there the next school year. You get where I'm going?
Yep.
Okay. Obviously, there'll be a percentage of that 30 that are seniors, so you won't be able to track that. But, you know, that will be off of that 30%, but it would be good.
Right before we came up here, Dan was looking at extracurricular participation by grade level, and it was, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12. And you can see on a diagonal as it goes up, so that information's kind of there, but we'll pull that out and make sure that that's present.
Do we have that for activities or no?
Just for activities, no, we'll have to pull that out.
Okay.
But that's a combined for sports in it.
Okay.
For athletics, that's all tracked in Skyward, or activities tracked in Skyward as well? Is that something that is an easy number for?
It is. Yeah, our sponsors provide that through our Google Sheet, then we upload that.
And attendance is part of that, too?
Correct, yeah.
I'm just wondering about, you know, seniors tend to join a lot of clubs right before heading out to college, so they tend to get real active in resume padding, if you will.
Or junior year, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm curious to know, like, where, I mean, you can see it in the numbers a little bit, where there's a little uptick in some of it, but anyway.
Okay. Daniel, have you reported out or touched on anything?
Yeah, a few things. I mean, I've only been here for a little over a month, but I've been very, very impressed with with RB, the athletics and the activity side, especially since that's in my my wheelhouse. But looking at these numbers, I just, you know, I've looked at data like this for my whole career, and these numbers are as good, or if not better, than many schools our own size or even larger. The school I came from, Hinsdale Central, we had only 23 sport athletes, and we had 2,400 students. In fact, we gave an award of senior year for three sport athletes. I couldn't give it out last year because we didn't have a three sport athlete, but here we have 59. So that's, that speaks volumes for the dedication of the athletes and the students here. So very excited about being able to work with the coaches, the staff, and the students this year to move forward with, hopefully, not hopefully, but move forward with the new athletic director next year. We'll have end of the season meetings. I'll do that with all the, myself and Tom, we'll do that with all the coaches, and we'll talk about numbers, we'll talk about goals, we'll talk about what what they need to see improvement. And if it's something that needs to be built in the budget, then of course, I'll I'll come to our principal and our superintendent and and bring that to the meetings, and if it's something that we can do inside of the athletic department, we'll make that recommendation so that we continue to improve on what we're doing already. I know that it was mentioned by Dave about girls and boys bowling. I did attend the first Upstate Conference Meeting last week, our new conference for next year. This is going to really expand the lower level scheduling for us, because we're struggling right now finding games. In fact, we're going to be one short of freshman game this year for football and other sports. So going through what the other 14 teams have and what we offer, it's going to be very comparable, and it's going to be, I think it's going to help our lower levels in competing. And with that said, girls and boys bowling, I know they're looking for, to add another team. I think there's 12 right now, but it's seven and five on different sides of the bracket. So we're on the five side, so we'd make it six, make it an official conference sport. So it's something that we'll look at for budgeting. The good news is there's no officials cost for bowling. The bad news is there is a rental cost for bowling, so it's kind of offset. So I'll work with the admin and with Tom on seeing where those numbers are. We'll do an interest survey, make sure the numbers are going to warrant it, that they're the actual new new athletes for that season, and not that we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul, taking bad, you know, taking people from basketball or other sports, but that there's enough new students to warrant adding that sport. But it sounds like there is. You need probably 12 to 15 students to have two levels of bowling, so it sounds like we're going to be able to do that.
So we have a bowling club right now, correct?
Correct.
That we started, this is the second year.
Second year.
So shifting into a new conference, this should all line up.
Correct.
Hopefully. The thing you were mentioning about if those kids are in the bowling club, but we're playing, you know, and just don't go to the bowling club during basketball season, now it may conflict with that to choose one of the other sports.
Correct, yeah. And then we're continuing seeing growth. I know I've had meetings with the boys and girls soccer coaches about more athletes out for soccer. Girls wrestling is growing all over, not just here at Riverside Brookfield, but throughout the state. It's probably the fastest growing sport in the state right now. And then boys and girls lacrosse continue to add numbers, and they'll be adding levels. And I know that we have, this might be the second year in a row for girls JV golf, so that's good to see those numbers grow, growing. And we had, we just had Mayan who qualified for the state tournament in girls golf for the third year in a row, so it was exciting. I got a chance to go down there and watch her play. I hopefully don't have to play against her. It'd be embarrassing, but, and then we're we're trying to do, Mr. Dillman and I are trying to do more of a presence on social media through athletics, and we're going to work with Dave on the future Bulldog Night and see what we can do to help promote our programs for incoming eighth graders. And then, of course, summer camps and offseason programs, we'll continue to to work on it and try to enhance.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan or Dave on engagement or attendance?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice President Gask, I think we can move on unless there's other questions. Cover the principal's report as well.
We did. Next on our agenda is consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the following, approval of minutes, sorry, course fees that we talked about last, the last time we met, and then also the approval of the out of state or overnight field trips for the 2023, 2024 school year. So if there are no questions on those three items, we can.
None were submitted.
Okay.
Ms. Locke, do you want to read a resolution?
Did I get it?
Do you have it?
I can read it.
Okay.
May I?
Yeah.
Absolutely. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meeting held on September 12th and 26th, 2023, open and closed. Course fees, 2024, 2025 school year, out of state and overnight field trips, 2023, 2024 school year for the RBHS Theater and the Ski and Snowboard Club as presented in the October 10, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Mary Ann, we'll need a roll call.
Roll call.
Second.
You can give it to Mr. Durkin.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
Ms. Kieska.
Yes.
Ms. Choska.
Yes.
Slack.
Yes.
Mr. Nellbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Dunharts.
Yes.
And Ms., she's the absentee, sorry.
Moving on to old business, is there anything on old business discussed?
Life safety, we're wrapping up. We are doing the final controls. Controls are like the actual thermostats speaking to the controls and being able for our facilities and maintenance manager to be able to access those via our Wi-Fi computer or at-home system so that we can adjust temperatures or get alarms if something's not working correctly. And those are being installed this weekend, and the project will be commissioned next. Remember, the board paid extra money for commissioning it as a separate third party, like another engineer to go through and make sure everything is tested as it was originally designed in the blueprints and in the original engineer's report. So that should all be wrapped up within the next week or two.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, payment of bills.
Dr. Smatana, do we have any questions submitted on bills? I did not see any. Did you see any?
No.
Okay, there were no questions submitted on bills, President Gask.
Can they take it?
Please.
All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the October 10, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Ms. Locke.
Ms. Kieska.
Yes.
Ms. Choska.
Yes.
Ms. Slack.
Yes.
Mr. Nellbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Dunharts.
Yes.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
Second opportunity for visitor statements. I see no one here. Next, we are able to add any discussion items for consideration for next meeting? Would anyone like to add anything? If not, we can move on to matters for closed session, correct?
Correct.
All right. This is where I read the list of.
Yep.
Matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Can I get a, is it a motion?
Motion to go into closed.
Motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, the Board of, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the October 10, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
A second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Novak.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Choska.
Yes.
Ms. Slack.
Yes.
Mr. Nellbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Dunharts.
Yes.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
And Ms. Kieska. Yes. We are now in closed session.